So we'll call to order our study session for the West Valley City Council. It is May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we are starting at four thirty-two. It always says six thirty. And the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. Our roll call, all is present, all are present, except Councilmember Whitstone, who has been excused. We have our minutes from May third. Are there any comments or a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. And they pass unanimously. All right, so we have a very light agenda because we have no public hearing next week. So we'll just move on to our regular meeting for tonight and review it. Are there any changes?
Yes, ma'am. So Mr. Pastrick is here to walk you through the changes that you received earlier today that you discussed last week from Mr. Moore on his proposed development.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council. So last week when we were reviewing this application, we recalled that there were essentially two options that Mr. Moore had forwarded. So his original application involved a townhome development with private streets. But then after council giving direction that we that private streets would no longer be allowed, he came back with two alternatives. So both the new alternatives have public streets. One includes a public park, which is option A. And then another option did not include the park and basically just had four lots as option B. And so I'll share my screen just as a quick refresher on that. So this this image here would be, this is option A. So you can see up in this northwest corner, you have the cul-de-sac that would terminate that existing sub-street and then two new lots for homes. And then roughly an acre of property here for a city park, and then the balance would be townhomes. And so in your packet, there's a development agreement that is geared towards this concept that has the that refers to the two single-family lots, the one-acre park, and then the eighty-three townhomes that are proposed in this concept, which is down from the original proposal, and also specifically mentions that that there would be public streets since the ordinance hasn't been changed yet. It puts that in the development agreement. And then this option here, option B, again, has the instead of the park, has two additional lots up in that western or northwestern portion of the property. And it's the same number of townhomes here, and again, with public streets. So that's the reason for the two options. So one, for example, option B refers to the four residential lots. There's no reference to the park. Whereas option A does mention the park and mentions two single-family lots. And then just also the as far as the ordinance goes, as far as actually changing the zoning. In option A, you have the the city park is included in with the townhome area as part of the zone change. And then in option B, that where you have those four lots, those are all in the R one ten zoning. So that's the re so if the council were to vote to approve, we would need to choose either option A or B for the ordinance as well as option A or B for the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pastrick?
Can you go to option A? Sorry, Jake. Option A, is there a reason why, I'm sure there is, but I I don't see it, why we would have the city park, the property be city park versus part of the development park and have it be maintained and managed by the development versus city having to put in the park and maintain it forever?
Certainly, that's an option. I haven't discussed that specifically with the developer, but I think I would imagine he would be open to that. The the thought process as far as having it be a public park was when this property first came to the city for zone change roughly two years ago, there were some comments from the residents about potentially having a park on the property. And so the developer had proposed that as an option, and we discussed it with the Parks Department, and they agreed that this could be a good location for a park. Being on the cul-de-sac like that, it could be accessible to both the the neighborhood to the north as well as to this new development. But certainly, that would be an option to just have that be part of the association and have the it did the only, I guess, downside of the city is then it would it wouldn't be open to the neighborhood to the north. It would just be specifically for that development.
I'm opposed to townhomes on that parcel, but I think if it does get approved, I would prefer to see the park be paid for by the owners there.
Okay, any other questions? You had something, Jake, or?
He stole my question. You answered the second part of the question, which was, I just wanted to hear from Parks and Rec about what they thought about the possibility and feasibility of assuming that property. Is there any particular benefits of that versus having it privately maintained?
Yeah, just just that it would be accessible to the public and have the access for the neighborhood to the north.
How big would that park be? One acre?
One acre.
How big is Hunter Ridge Park? And how close is that?
I'm not sure offhand the the size of that. It it is, I want to say roughly like if I'm going to guess, a half mile maybe to the north.
Yeah, it seems like it's in the same subdivision.
Do you want an answer from Nancy on that? How close it is and how big it is? She's online. No? Yes?
Yes.
Hi, can you can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. Hunter Ridge Park is just barely over an acre, so it's almost the same size. It's one point one acre. And it's located on fifty-seven hundred west and about forty-four hundred south. So I don't know the exact mile, you know, in in terms of miles, but it is fairly close.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you.
And is that our only change for tonight?
I believe that is.
Okay. So we'll go to our communication item and major well, thoroughfares, neighborhood wall update. Oh, yeah, these are all of our new walls.
Yeah, so discussing the various transportation corridors, the type of walls we've used, or with spec, have looked at all the design standards. Or I should say maybe more accurately designed discussions.
As I was reading it, I was trying to figure out what it was, but I remember looking at it and seeing all the different walls.
Good evening, good afternoon, Dan Johnson, Public Works Department. Yeah, so I've been asked to give you an update on or just lead a discussion on on our implementation, past, present, and future of of walls throughout the city, particularly these concrete walls that we've that you've seen go up on on various in various projects. So just a little bit of background. The first one that we did was in Fairborn Station along the west side of thirty thirty west. The the new road that goes from from Lehman to thirty-five hundred south. And we'll get some pictures in here. And then after that, we did this this first piece of twenty-seventh west from Lancer to forty-one hundred south. And and then forty-one hundred south was completed in two thousand and twenty-one, which which put walls in various locations of along that reconstruction project corridor with so those walls were installed alongside yards and backyards of that re, you know, within the limits of that reconstruction project. Anywhere that warranted a tall, non, you know, a see, non-seethrough fence was it got a wall. So this is just a glance at Fairborn Station thirty-three west. So obviously, it it's just a little bit of it's beautiful. It's a lovely wall and kind of a before and after of what it was before we we came in with the walls and and the road and the after shot, and definitely quite an improvement. And of course, you've all seen this stuff on twenty-seven and west. We've talked about it quite a bit before, but the before and after on on this corridor is striking and and definitely a great improvement. And just more, this is, yeah, this is more of that same section. And forty-one hundred south during that was the reconstruction, the big reconstruction project that was recently completed. And and, you know, we have, it's it's fantastic. I've got nothing but compliments from from people that have seen those walls, and they look great. And and then currently, we have either out under construction, we're actually so twenty-seven hundred west from forty-one hundred south to forty-seven hundred south on the east side of the road, we're installing this wall. And the the great part about this particular type of construction is that these walls, you can design them, you either just act as a fence or as a retaining wall. And along this particular segment from forty-one to forty-seventh on twenty-seventh west, we have several properties that are quite quite high. And so this wall will be, in some some sections of this wall serve as a retaining wall as well. But again, it's from that from the street side, it looks just like a nice fence. And so and then forty-seven hundred south. When I prepared this, it was out to bid, but it's actually the bids have been opened, and we're going through that process. We don't can't, we don't know the name of the contractor yet, but but tend to build it beginning this summer and and finishing up next summer, the the big reconstruction of forty-seven hundred south from fortieth west to fifty-six hundred west, or actually to fifty-four hundred west. And but this project will include walls on the north side of the road intermittently from forty-eight hundred west to fifty-four hundred west. So and here's kind of a, oh, this is what's this is twenty-seventh west. So this is the piece that's under construction right now. And again, you can see kind of a, there was a retaining wall and a fence combo before, but now it's just a retaining wall. And and when we're all done, we'll be it'll be painted and and it'll look great. And then this is a a piece of forty-seventh south that will be reconstructed this summer and next. And there's no after photo, but you can imagine it's going to be it's going to be a big, beautiful wall. Yes.
Oh, that's torn down right now, right?
Yeah, with the construction of the the power line burial that's already in 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 place or under underway. Some of that's, yeah, been torn down, and and it potentially will be replaced with temporary chain link fencing, depending on the needs of the neighborhood. But and depending on how start how soon the roadway contractor starts as well. So we'll keep an eye on that, but but, yeah, it's it's coming soon, so it may not be back up. So some some of the things we have to think about when we're building walls, when we build this this type of construction immediately adjacent to a sidewalk, it really requires that the sidewalk just needs to be removed and replaced. You could theoretically cut out a piece of sidewalk every eight feet. But that would be, it it really just would destroy the sidewalk. So really, if you're if we're if we're building up against an existing sidewalk, the side, we just need to plan to remove and replace the sidewalk. We currently, you know, every time we evaluate, every time we do a a major roadway reconstruction that has backyard or side yard type of of properties, and, you know, and we're and we're looking at the sidewalk and reconstruction of the whole facility, we're definitely including walls. I mean, I credit our city manager for the vision here. I mean, this is definitely something that he's seen, and he is Public Works guys. We don't necessarily look outside the sidewalk sometimes, but but this is absolutely part of our evaluation process. And we are looking at at opportunities to install street trees, streetlights, and walls and and overhead power burial every opportunity we can. So and it's not always feasible. Sometimes the the wires aren't variable, and sometimes the yeah, but nonetheless, we're looking at them. So to give you a feel for the prices that we're paying, I actually, after we opened bids this last week, I raised these up a little bit from what my initial presentation said. We're we're looking at three to three hundred to six hundred and fifty just for the installation of the wall alone. The sidewalk removal and replacement is about fifty bucks a foot. And then right-of-way acquisition, you see these things coming through quite a bit. If if we're to generalize those, they're about eighty dollars a foot. And when we're we're paying for those, that's not just the easements, that's we're buying sheds and grass and improvements that are on the other side of the of the fence. You know, as we've as we've as we've done these projects, we, you know, the first one that we did, we we did property restoration on both sides of the fence. And that's tricky. And the way we approach it now, we actually, we pay the the property owner restoration costs so that they pay to install the way that they'd like it. And and we've found that works out quite a bit better. And then so you add it all up, and you were somewhere in the four to eight hundred dollar a foot range to install these walls, depending on the installation, on where it is and and what it looks like. You know, if it was just a a wall with no sidewalk or property impacts here, you could be, you could be a little bit less than three hundred dollars a foot. But nonetheless, it's it's not cheap. So we've been looking at, these are, you know, between Public Works and and Mr. Pastrick, we've we've done an extensive look at some major thoroughfares throughout the city that that it would make sense. I mean, there's lots of of places that it would be nice to have these, but we've really been looking at just the main roads. And so that's a kind of a sampling of of some places that they could be installed. And then I just close you out with a picture of a pretty wall and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
You said earlier that walls on forty-seventh would be intermittent?
Intermittent only, anywhere that there's a backyard, there will be a wall. And so or side yard, yeah, yep, backyard, side yard, yes.
And then part of the walls, I think, was some, I think it's aluminum fencing, black aluminum fencing was also for some of the yards, the front yards.
We did that on forty-one hundred south.
On forty-one?
Yeah, we did.
I was gonna say iron, but it's not, I know it's not iron.
Yeah, we did that on forty-one hundred south, and it is an aluminum product. But that was a decision for forty-one hundred south and and certainly could be, you know, expanded. There really aren't opportunities on forty-seven hundred south to implement that because we really only have side yard and backyards on that project.
My comment was that going to be that on the corner, southeast corner of Forty-first and Fortyeth, it's a house that has that ornamental black fencing. And they hit it a number of times, and so it looks terrible.
It does.
So who's, I mean, I
Well, it is their responsibility, and and that's the
Do you do you remember what was on that particular parcel before?
Chain link.
And I think it was hit before, too.
Before a number of times, yeah.
Yep. And this looks like it was hit, it's it's the driveway going into the
They pulled something.
And it swung wide or something and took it out. Yep, that's definitely
They look nice. I like the black. It looks good.
Glad you mentioned and remembered that, because when we did the design work on forty-one hundred south, of course, our our big overall effort was to get as much uniformity as much of the old kind of junk replaced, right? But one of the things we ran into was a lot of these parcels a lot had weird configurations, or they're facing the street, or they had what do we call those? The drive-in, drive-out driveways and all of that. So that was the solution we came up with to deal with a lot of those, and it worked pretty well. So yes, if we do need to use that again in some of these, we certainly would consider that, too.
Thirty-one hundred south, last night in a meeting, we we talked about this the strategic planning meeting, and we talk about maybe even a little bit vinyl product or limited product or something. Thirty-one hundred south, is that that's still on your agenda?
Yeah, so we I mean, thirty-one hundred south definitely is one of the roads that we've that we're evaluating, that that we've found locations where it would make sense to install this. And and we actually have a pavement project that's coming out. You'll see that next week. We'll study that, but and and it doesn't include walls, but that's really because we focused, it's really work, it's just we focused on the pavement. It's not necessarily a reconstruction project. But as far as, I mean, we definitely identified places where where walls could go, and thirty-one hundred south has lots of places where where it would make sense. It it just becomes kind of a priority, a prioritization thing, a funding question, and and where to put those energies. Because it's that's always going to be the limiting factor, obviously.
So kind of at the west end of the forty-seven hundred south project, just before fifty-six, there was one cul-de-sac that pretty much goes out to the road, and the chain link fence was always down.
Yes.
You're gonna put the block wall there, even though it's not a side yard, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said intermittent and only side yards, that one's
Wrong word, because really, the the only parcels that will be excluded are those parcels that face that are closer to Maverick. If they have an existing wall right now or fence, it will be replaced with a concrete fence.
Okay.
Or wall.
Right, that was my only fear, because that thing's been ugly for a long time.
We had this, we had requests from during the design process. Right now, there's a, I believe it's a four-foot sidewalk, no park strip. There will be a a park strip and a sidewalk, so we'll push it away from forty-seventh to be closer to the cul-de-sac. There were requests for connections to the cul-de-sac, which we did not include in the project. So it will be a closed, the the wall will be continuous through there, through those, the tops of those cul-de-sacs.
Was there a reason not to open that up?
It was just kind of a neighborhood consideration, really kind of a part of it's just aesthetics for the wall, the continuity of the wall. And we really didn't get a lot of, it was really, I guess I had one one request for that, but I don't can't feel like we had a lot of
Okay.
clamor to to put that in.
So only one person wanted to be able to go out onto forty-seventh?
Yeah, it was like
Everybody else wants their subdivision closed.
Bus convenience type of a request.
Okay, perfect.
The park strip is going to be paved, or what are we doing in the park?
The park strip will be a colored patterned concrete with tree wells, just like you're seeing on forty-one hundred south. Except there will be no overhead power.
So I'm getting complaints that all the trees are dying on forty-one hundred south. Is that true? And are we going to hold the contractor to?
I don't think it's true. I think there's one variety that's just barely starting to leaf out. The rest of them have leafed out. They've come, they've come in stages as the different varieties have bloomed at different times. And I think, I mean, I've been watching that closely. And I believe that the last variety that hasn't bloomed yet will bloom, certainly not a tree expert. But we walked the walked it quite extensively with our tree experts, and they all, you know, last year, they felt comfortable with the survivability of these trees.
Okay, thank you.
We're actually watching the the recent tree installations on thirty-five hundred south, and fifty-six hundred west associated with Mountain View. There's some dead trees that did not make it through the winter, and those are being replaced. We're working closely with UDOT to get those done as well.
Okay, thank you. Hey, any other questions?
Maybe the last question, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. So the final question I have for you is you're gonna plan on studying something about thirty-one hundred south this year?
Um, we could have that conversation. I mean, I I would work with my with my boss and and take direction as directed, but
So
So you don't have a layout plan?
No.
Okay.
So one of the the advantages of what Dan's presenting to you is we have gone down, and we've looked at what are the major thoroughfares and what could we do? And when we have opportunity, you know, because it's major road construction or something like that, we have some grant money, whatever, we would come and actually propose to you, hey, we're doing forty-one, we're doing twenty-seven, we're doing forty-seven, now's the time to do it, right? Some of these are more in the line of, they certainly would fit the criteria. We don't have anything currently planned for it. Dan mentioned that thirty-one hundred stretch, who got like a, but it's a it's an overlay or payment or place?
It's a it's overlay, it's a
So overlay is not
Not touching the sidewalk other than the ramps.
Right, from a prioritization or a budget, overall project standpoint. But having said that, again, the flexibility of this sort of a setup here is if you as a council said you wanted us to concentrate on that and go put the money to that on walls, and we could go as directed and go do that?
Our priority, I mean, these, the previous installations have been selected because they're associated with joining network.
Right.
And it there's definitely some additional bang for your buck.
So the shorter answer to that question is, Tom, no, that's not in current plan. But if you, as council, directed it and wanted us to go either just look at it or for sure do it or whatever, then we could do that.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, thank you. All right, are there any questions or concerns about the calendar? Any potential future agenda items they would like to bring up? Sure.
We're running down to the deadline for joining with the Utah Renewable Energy Communities. We really only have two more weeks that we
And we're not meeting next week.
Do that. Are we having a study meeting next week? So can I propose that that we in our study meeting next week have a communication item? Possibly a resolution for us to to hear any updates that that John has learned from the past two months as he's heard from
John Springmeyer?
Yeah, John Springmeyer. And and any any other information we might have on that, just so we can have all the information and and have our last chance opportunities to make a final decision on that. Or a decision to continue and then see what happens after that.
John, have something ready?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. That's good, communication, okay. Anything else?
Everybody was good with that, sorry.
I think so, yeah. I mean, is any opposed? I think information's always good. Sorry, I should have asked.
Yeah, no, I'm just checking.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you. Any others?
So we have the potential future, okay, I have one.
Okay.
Decollet land, that's one is one block, and we have like three schools. One is a devil hall charter school, a second one a Vanguard, and the third one's an anxiety. There's a lot of kids there in the morning and after school. So sometimes it's very fast to wonder if we can do something with that with that, because that's all these in block and the three schools stood right there. People, they go very fast sometime and we're concerned about it.
She just wants to have police take a look over there for like speed. She just wants to have police take a look over there or like speed control?
Yes, study something.
We have a school zone there?
Uh, but they see.
I don't know. I don't know that we have lights or anything. I don't, I don't have crossing cars.
I mean, we do have the intersections that are there with traffic control. I can't remember if we have school crossings or not.
School crossings.
There are crossing cars, there are. Okay. They're striking crosswalks.
Thanks, Dan, for that.
And there are lights.
But not, not twenty mile per hour.
No, screen, do you speak?
There's just strike school crosswalks.
Is that difficult to put those up, or do you have to have permission from the city, I mean, the school district of the?
No, they would need to, it need to be a part of their safe route plan, like their safe walking plan.
Yeah.
And where these are charter schools, they don't necessarily, it's tricky, it's different, and I don't.
We can look into it.
We can get a report next week.
I know there's a standard set up for which they go by and say, yes, you have one here, no, you don't. We can, I can't remember what it is, as it applies differently to charter schools either. I think of the other charter schools around like Monticello, and there are no.
No road.
Right, school zones are crosswalks, but they also have their traffic plan that they run themselves through the the school parking.
Yeah, which doesn't really still work well at all.
Anyway, we'll go find that.
Yeah. Okay, have we had a request from them for, okay, called traffic calming?
I know.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Seeing none others? Council reports? Seeing none? Did we need a closed session?
Yes, for the same reasons.
Pending litigation. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion? And we'll go into a closed session and not do any other business and then adjourn immediately after.
So move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Zero, okay. We'll go into a closed session.